The time is now seven o'clock. I would like to call the order of the Beloit City Council meeting in order at this time. Can we have a roll call, please?
Roll call shows six city councilors. Our President, Councillor Noonam, is absent.
Thank you. Next item of business is a pledge of allegiance. Will we all stand for the pledge, please? Thank you. The next item is Special Order of the Day and Announcements we have known, but however, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome the Acting City Manager, Mr. Paul York, who is the Finance Director for the city while the city manager is away, getting a little on vacation. Paul stepped in and filling his place, so we promised him we're going to have a ton of questions for him this evening, so we just want to make sure. We want to welcome him to his first official meeting. Next item is public hearings.
Item 4A is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of a tavern use, an outdoor seating area, and the outdoor sale possession and consumption of alcohol in that area in a C2 neighborhood commercial district for the property located at 1565 Madison Road for Sarah's Pub. There was a planned recommendation for approval for Zero.
Thank you. Staff presentation, please.
This application involves the expansion of Sarah's Pub into the former laundromat space located adjacent to the pub. The proposed plan for the expanded bar area includes pool tables, bathrooms, a storage room, and an outdoor seating area. Plans also include removing portions of the existing exterior walls in the south portion of the building to create an outdoor area, which will be approximately 425 square feet in area with four tables and 20 chairs. The walls will be replaced with an insect screen and wrought iron fencing. Attached to staff report was a site plan, a floor plan, and elevations. The site plan shows 59 parking spaces, which does not meet code. The owner will have to provide the spaces onsite or through a shared parking agreement. The owner has indicated that they are working on an agreement with the owners of the adjacent car wash property. Plan Commission held a public hearing at its meeting and recommended approval subject to the conditions which are listed in the resolution in the packet. They did modify one of the conditions recommended by staff, which was Condition 11, to completely restrict music from being played in the outdoor area. And the conditions that must be met before the conditional use may be established include the following: that this conditional use permit authorizes the expansion of an existing tavern use, an outdoor seating area in the location shown on the attached site plan, and the outdoor sale possession and consumption of alcohol in that area on the property located at 1565 Madison Road. The outdoor seating area shall be no larger than 425 square feet and shall be located in the modified southern portion of the building addressed 1565 Madison. There must be an emergency exit from the outdoor seating area onto the property, and a sign must be installed to identify it. The emergency exit must feature maintained panic hardware. All exit doors must swing in the direction of egress. All exit pathways must be 36 inches in width, must be marked with paint or differing floor colors, and must remain clear at all times. The occupancy limit for the outdoor area must be posted and maintained, and there must be sufficient ambient lighting in the outdoor area to prevent falls. The applicant shall provide a visible and audible fire alarm within the outdoor seating area. The metal poles that previously supported the orange snow fence must be removed, and concrete curbing or wheel stops must be installed to protect the landscaped area on the west side of the parking lot from vehicular traffic. A shared parking agreement with a neighboring property owner must be submitted and approved by planning staff prior to the establishment of the uses. At least 17 off-street parking spaces must be provided. The existing parking spaces located on the south and west side of the building must be striped to show patrons where to park. All trash dumpsters, recycling bins, and/or grease traps must be enclosed and screened from view. An architectural review certificate is required before any changes, including signage, may be made to the exterior of the buildings. The final plans showing the details regarding the ingress and egress to and from the outdoor area, the emergency exit from the outdoor seating area, and any other exterior changes to the building must be reviewed as part of the architectural review certificate. Building permits are required before any structural, electrical, or plumbing changes may be made to the buildings. Music may not be played in the outdoor seating area. The outdoor seating area shall not be used for outdoor seating under the outdoor sale possession and consumption of alcohol between 12:00 AM and 11:00 AM. The applicant must amend the existing liquor license to include the expanded tavern area and outdoor seating area. All delinquencies associated with this property shall be paid. The applicant and property owner must meet all the requirements of Cityable Municipal Code, and then our standard one, that any major changes come back through this public process, and staff may approve minor changes administratively. And Plan Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Thank you. Before you have a seat, Mrs. Richardson, we did receive a document. Do you want to introduce that document?
That document was actually given to me by the owner, so I'm assuming he will -- he asked me to hand it out.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure he will speak to it.
Yeah, go ahead and refer to it.
Mr. President, you asked me to refer to this document that we've all received here, a letter of understanding dated to today's date. In accordance with all applicable laws and ordinances, McKern Brothers LLC doing business as United Car Wash agrees to rent and make available 17 parking spots for use by Sarah's Pub. Signed, Tim McKern, owner of McKern Brothers LLC, and Eddie Fadlowski. I apologize for mispronouncing owner of Sarah's Pub. So it would appear, at least from this document, that the issue of additional parking has been resolved.
Is that correct, Mrs. Richardson?
Staff hasn't reviewed it. It was just handed to me tonight, so I really can't speak to whether that meets the letter of the law in terms of code. So I really -- but it's a condition of approval, so it's something that doesn't have to be done tonight. It's just one of those things that the owner would have to meet before the outdoor seating area and expanded bar area could be used.
Okay.
So we will review it and determine if it meets the requirements, and if it doesn't, we'll work that out with the owners of Sarah's Pub.
Okay, so what I know, just a point of our clarification, if we move forward on this tonight, will, and you find out that this does not meet it, what happens?
We work with the owners of Sarah's Pub to get one that meets the requirements we need. It's just an administrative function that we do. This planning staff does.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing for Item 4A. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on Item 4A? If so, please step forward, state your name and your address at this time.
Good evening. I'm Tom Sugars with Thomas Design Architects.
Could you speak in the mic, please?
Yeah. Get this where everybody can see. Thomas Sugars with Thomas Design Architects, working with Eddie and Sarah on their project. I guess I'd like to just make a quick rundown of what we're doing, so you get a clear understanding of sort of what was just explained verbally. When we first started working with them, asked them what they were trying to accomplish here, and primarily wanted to make some improvements to the bar as far as making things more spacious, more comfortable for the patrons, not so much a huge increase in number of occupants, but just a nicer environment. Also, he mentioned right away that he wanted to address some concerns that the neighbors had, and we've done our best to do that. Basically, what we're doing is, this is the complete building here. This side here is where the existing restaurant is. The center section is where the existing pub is, and then this section on the end was previously the laundromat. So we're going to take over that area and expand into that. And the smoking area that's discussed earlier is right up in this corner. So that's on the Madison Road side, on the front side. We're gonna -- it's not going to be placed outside of the footprint of the existing building. We're going to take space away from the inside. We're going to leave the existing roof right over that area. This is what we would call the front. This is the primary parking area out here. Going to leave that roof and everything intact. We're just going to remove a large section of the front wall and a fairly large section of the sidewall, and that's, as mentioned before, we're going to replace that with screen and some wrought iron type of grating or fencing to dress that up. And that exit that was talked about, that we need to provide as part of Beloit's ordinance, we'll work that right into one of these screen panels. We haven't really decided which one, but that'll be either in that wall or this wall. Most likely, this wall here, because we've got a sidewalk running across the front. And that space is shown right here. It's about 425 square feet, I believe. We've placed a wall across there to separate it, glass doors and things to separate. We're going to open a fairly large section of this wall up here. This will remain a firewall. We'll be putting a fire-rated rolling shutter above that to meet code. That'll be in place. One of the big improvements Eddie and Sarah wanted to do was increase their toilet room capacity, because there's been some concern that maybe there was some activity going on outside that maybe could be alleviated by providing some nice bigger toilet rooms. So they're doing that. They're taking this whole section of the added space back here and essentially doubling the number of fixtures that they have now and enlarging the square footage even more than that. So that'll be placed back here, men and women's space. One of the other concerns that neighbors had was a lot of sound coming out of that space when the doors open. So we've placed an airlock here, fairly typical of what you'd see for energy conservation, which it'll also accomplish, but an airlock like that also goes a long ways towards stopping the sound that transfers through that. Hopefully, one door will be closed while the other is open most of the time. So taking a section of this existing seating area away and putting an airlock in the front there. You can see on this sketch, and I believe there was some pictures perhaps distributed, that show the dumpster enclosures that were placed on the backside of the building. There's one here on the Madison Road side. The other elevation, which isn't shown here, also has another one on the backside. It's symmetrical to this, just on the other corner of the building. Those have been installed and are in place. Presently, there's an overhang across the front of this building, and we're going to extend that around the corner a little bit to cover up this area where the smoking area is, and repaint the side, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Item 4A? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. Marshall Bound, 717 Cleveland, Beloit, Wisconsin. I do not live in the area where the bar is going to be, but I have known Sarah and Eddie now for the last five years. They have taken a bar that -- we used to be an eyesight, just a terrible place to be over there, and they've cleaned it up a whole bunch. They did that with the restaurant. The restaurant was an excellent, excellent restaurant now. Before, it was a dump. I mean, nobody wanted to go in there. Now they've got a clientele that comes back. It's a loyal clientele. They're very good people. I understand that a conditional permit is something that will stay with the building, so even if Sarah and Eddie decide to sell it, the conditional permit will be there. But let me say this: we don't want to look for ghosts behind trees tonight. We're looking at what we got right now. These guys are going to do what they said. They've already started with the enclosures. They're already putting together a plan, and they're working with the neighborhood. And after hearing everything that the architect had to say, I would suggest that you go along with the Planning Commission tonight. I would request that. And I would say that I don't think we can do anything better than to bring these kind of people into our community, those people that are going to clean up the community, help us with our neighborhoods. And the west side needs a whole bunch of that over there as it is right now. We're starving for business as it is. This is the kind of people that we want to attract. We want to bring them into the area so that we can have a good neighborhood that has both business and homes. They're going to work with the community, and I think with that being said, you know, the door should cut down on some of the noise that's over there. I'm not over there, so I can't talk to, speak to the noise. I understand what the neighbors are going through, but there was a bar there when they all moved in there. This bar, this bar
-- Whoa, 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 excuse me.
This bar, this bar was, now it's cleaned up, and they're doing a lot better job over there. So I would ask that you go ahead and please approve what the Planning Commission has put forward. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, let me pause and just proceed with a word of caution that if anyone would like to speak to this matter, you come to the mic, you state your name, and you state your address at that time. I cannot allow people to just start shouting out from the forum. So I'm asking everyone to please respect that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward and state your name and address, please.
Mavis Doherty, 2120 Poff Street. My husband and I built our home in 1963. There was not a tavern there, and it came many years after that, and the houses were there first. I just want to set that straight.
Okay, thank you.
And we are not against any business. We are, just want our quiet neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lee Williams, and I live at 1554 Cleveland Street in Beloit. After what the architect said, I found I have to revise my statement a little bit, so I don't repeat a lot. I was present at the last meeting, and the objections to the expansion seemed to be only that the bar was noisy and the amount of people that were in the parking lot, and some were doing things they shouldn't. But there did not appear to be a problem with the expansion itself. The intention of the expansion is to address these complaints. As was mentioned by the architect, they've made several efforts to see that the noise would be greatly reduced, and putting in the additional bathrooms would solve all of the other problem. The owners of Dita's have been very cooperative with the city, and they make every effort to resolve the issues that were stated in the complaint. I have lived in Beloit since 1971, which is 39 years if I count, right, and there has always been a bar and a restaurant and a laundromat at that location. I used that laundromat, and I did once or twice eat at that restaurant, and it was yucky. I'm sure that bar was noisy as well. I do know for a fact, and this is from my work experience, that the old bar, restaurant, and laundromat were places for drug distribution and tended to be very loud and unruly. And I thank God that since Sarah and Eddie have taken over, that the drugs and the other issues are no longer a problem. I would consider the fact that that fact would be a definite priority and a point in their favor. They have really cleaned up that area. Sarah and Eddie have been very good for this neighborhood. They have provided a growing business at a time when our economy is in the pits, and I congratulate them for the good job that they are doing and that they have done with the restaurant and the bar already. I hope the council will sincerely consider all of the facts in this case, and on those facts, approve the addition for Sarah's Pub.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward.
Hello. I'm Deanna Parrish, and I live at 1600 Sun Valley Drive, just behind the bar. We're not opposed to them expanding their business and running a good business. We just have a couple curiosity questions. When Item 12 says the outdoor seating area shall not be used for outdoor seating or and/or the sale of or possession and consumption of alcohol between 12:00 AM and 11:00 AM, so from 12:00 AM to 2:00 AM or 2:30, depending on, you know, which night of the week it is, when the bar closes, where will those people be doing their smoking and drinking? Will they still be in that smoking area if it says not used for that at those hours? Are they going to be back out in the parking lot? That's one of our questions. And then on the 14th, we did have a meeting with Eddie and Sarah, with the neighbors, and it went really well, and their proposed plans look good, sound good. If they go through with it how it is, should be no problem. But that particular night, early Sunday morning, I called the police twice with noise. And the first time I called, they said they already had officers there. But that's only recorded as one call, and we're kind of curious as to why that is. Other than that, we're hoping that it goes okay and they do what they say, but we're still concerned with the noise.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello. My name's Roger Allen. I live at 2128 Stayborn. I have known Sarah and Eddie since they've owned Dita's Restaurant and Sarah's Pub. They are honest, hardworking people that care about their patrons and about their neighbors. I believe that Eddie has addressed the issues with the neighborhood and the City Planning Commission, working with them. I believe he's diligently tried to resolve issues and come up with a good plan that benefits everyone concerned. I think all of what he's proposing is not only good for his establishment, but also as far as noise. I think people were probably in the parking lot smoking because they had no smoking area. A lot of issues that they're having a problem with, I feel, should be resolved with the improvements that he's proposing. And I asked the council to approve the new plan, and because I believe it will only improve the current conditions for his establishment as well as the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Tim McKern, 2815 Riverside Drive in Beloit. I'll try not to be too redundant. I find myself in concurrence with most of the positive comments that others have said tonight. I think the world of Eddie and Sarah. I'd like to think that Beloit's the kind of community that can attract couples like this, that want to raise families here, that want to invest back in our community. And I think you would all agree with that. As the owner of the car wash, just to the north of the bar and restaurant, I can speak to previous ownership of the bar and kind of rampant drug use that went on behind that building that I have not witnessed since Eddie and Sarah have taken over that property. I stopped by Saturday night just to kind of look at it and get a glimpse of it for myself and check out the operation, and I saw two of the largest men I've ever seen in big yellow shirts. One of them was out sweeping the parking lot, and the other one was keeping his eye on me most of the night while I was in there. But it's a pretty tight ship in there, although I didn't really see any reason for that. I mean, it was a pretty well-behaved crowd, and everybody seemed to be having a lot of fun. At least at the time that I was there, the noise in the parking lot didn't seem to be over the top, and I went to the perimeter to just kind of test it for myself. So can't speak to other occasions where that might have been an issue, but I've got great faith in these folks that they will do exactly what they've said that they will do, so I urge you to vote for approval for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Second call, anyone else wishing to speak on Item 4A? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on Item 4A? Seeing no one else, I would like to close the public hearing at this time and entertain a motion from council.
I'd move approval of 4A.
It's a motion, motion by Vanda Bogart, second by Dench. Council discussion, please. Council de Forest.
I have some questions. Sorry. Page six of our packet, which my computer now has just frozen out. I'm trying to go from memory. On page six of our packet, and I'm visually trying to remember the last paragraph before the key issues. Oh, convenient. Thank you, Mr. Acting City Manager. Can someone help me with what's on page six of our packet? Head, please.
This is the first page of the report.
Yes, thank you. There's a reminder there that conditional use permits allows this body to approve a use only if the council determines the proposed use will not have a negative impact on surrounding land uses, which in this case would be the neighbors using their properties. I'm just, I'm wondering, because the noise has been an ongoing complaint that we heard. We heard at the last petition of this body for this expansion. Are you familiar with what efforts have been done in terms of mitigating some of those noise issues, especially in the parking lot? I mean, it does seem that the expansion will help address some of those, but I think the one issue that was raised by one of the residents about not having access to that outdoor seating area between 12 and 2 is a good one. And what will, have you heard from the owners at all about what they plan to do to deal with trickle out into the parking lot between 12 and 2?
I have not, but essentially what would happen is, I mean, we've been doing these typically to not have people, you know, basically in an outdoor area. I mean, my guess is since their intent is to have a place for people to smoke, that the people who want to smoke after midnight will trickle out in the parking lot. I mean, I think that's just the eventual outcome of that. But we haven't talked to Eddie and Sarah about, you know, how they're going to deal with that. I mean, we put the condition in. We've been putting that in all of the outdoor seating areas. This obviously is a very different kind of situation than the others. We haven't had this exact kind of outdoor seating area, so we haven't had a discussion with them. But I am guessing what will happen is if you can't sit in there, the smokers will wander out into the parking lot.
Do you think it would be a dangerous precedent for us to extend the time that they can use that outdoor space until 2?
No, because they're really, the conditions are, you know, there's a set of them that are pretty standard, but then there's some that you, that are different for each case, like the size of the fence. I mean, there's some things that are going to be different by virtue of where they're located, so I don't think you're, you know, setting any kind of precedent.
Okay. And then also, I saw the Plan Commission, oh yes, my computer unfroze, yay. The Plan Commission chose to strike out music being allowed to be played in the outdoor seating area at all at any time. And is that the way the current conditions stand with their recommendation there to eliminate music outside at all times?
Yes. I mean, essentially, we put that in, like we've been putting that in in the other areas, because the 10:00 PM is kind of the noise ordinance standard. And the Plan Commission asked the owners if they planned to have music out there, which they had no intention of having any kind of speakers or anything out there. And so to remove it, Plan Commission thought was just kind of, you know, an easy one, because no one really wanted music out there. And just if you allow music, you know, if, their point was that if Eddie and Sarah go away and they sell the bar, somebody else could come in there and have music piped out there till 10:00 PM. And so why don't we just remove that possibility? So the Plan Commission unanimously supported making that change, and I don't think the owners of Sarah's Pub or the neighbors or anybody had any reason. I mean, they were all happy. They were all fine with that condition being modified.
Okay. And then, sorry, one more question, if I may. We heard from quite a few of the neighbors in with the previous petition. Can you speak to, and maybe since Heidi was there at the Plan Commission, could also speak to what was the response from the neighbors regarding this particular petition? Were they, for the most part, in favor of this because it accommodated some of the people, traffic that was in the parking lot, or were there still concerns?
I have a question that's very similar to this evening's.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's still concerns about the existing bar situation. I don't know how it was the last couple of weekends since the Plan Commission meeting, but there was concern about, you know, the base of the music, not music filtering out into the parking lot necessarily, and then some of the parking lot activity. But the hope of the neighbors, they were happy with the plan, as Deanna Parrish said tonight, and the hope was that this would kind of alleviate some of the parking lot issues by moving people inside. And I think the base is something that the owners of Sarah's Pub are just going to have to figure out how to deal with, you know, in the long, whether it gets approved or not, that's just an ongoing issue that they'll just have to deal with, and I would hope they would do that.
So were there any other neighbors that expressed objection to the expansion besides the email that we received, to your knowledge?
At the meeting, I think the email was the same objection. I think they still have concerns about the bar.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counsel Haines.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. If I'm grasping this correctly, I believe that the primary objections still remain, are coming down ultimately to trickle out into the parking lot. And this is Parrish's question on Item 12. Now, it specifically states that the, we're not going to permit the possession of, consumption of alcohol between 12:00 AM and 11:00 AM. Does that prohibit any occupation of that space, or can it still be used for --
If they're standing. It says outdoor seating, and then, you know, sale possession or consumption of alcohol. So if people truly were just standing out there and smoking without a drink in their hand, I don't know how likely that is.
I can grasp that.
I don't know if someone's going to set a drink down and then walk out to an area like that, that's part of the bar area, and...
That would be questionable. I think that though, I'm -- I, I think that though, I'm, if, I think what we're attempting, what we're most worried about is trickle-out into the parking lot. And I think that might trump the, you know, the normal considerations of this one. So, at this point, I guess hey, we'll get the clarification. We're going to, we would assume if we left this in place, we would assume that they really couldn't use the space during that time period.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to compliment all of those that came and spoke on the plan commission and tonight, the first plan commission and the other council meetings. Whether you're for or opposed, I commend you for speaking out. It's actually why I'm sitting here, because I was, got involved in some stuff myself. So, I just wanted to commend all of those that came forward and spoke. I think, you know, we've, we've also talked to Chief Jacobs about the police call history. So, I mean, we have looked at that, and, you know, I take very serious what the residents think. It's also my neck of the woods as well, so, you know, I'm concerned about that also. But I also know, I've heard more things about what has been done in a positive manner. And I know we're losing buildings over there and losing businesses over there rapidly. I would like to make a motion that we extend the hours, if I can do that.
I'll second that.
Not to extend the hours?
To extend.
To extend the hours.
Counsel, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay. There a way that you can, do you have it worded, Carol, how you would want it worded so we can make sure that we're...
Of this motion?
Of this motion, correct.
Well, if Counsel Jones would restate it unless it's clearly that she wishes to extend the hours, in which I...
I meant to mention 12. Okay. The hours of 2:00 AM and 11:00 AM, that's what you would want to do, just to be clear. If what, if I'm understanding, Counsel Jones, it would be the outdoor seating areas shall not be used for outdoor seating and/or the outdoor sale possession and consumption of alcohol between the hours of 2:00 AM and 11:00 AM.
Yes, I second that.
Clearly said, thank you.
What she said.
Okay. There is a motion and a second. So, first of all, I believe we need to vote on that motion. Counsel Vanda Bogart.
Yes, I have a question. So, the effect of that would allow people to be out there in this enclosed area for those additional two hours, is that correct?
What's not enclosed space, I have to be careful about how we define.
Well, fenced, fenced, fenced in, fenced in space.
The outdoor space.
Yeah. And what is, why is that necessary or why is that important? Maybe I misheard it, but I thought Ms. Christensen said that as a standard, we're trying to keep the noise down after midnight and, and why should we do this, I guess, is my, is my question.
First, Counsel Jones.
Thank you. As a person who may know firsthand why someone would do that, smokers are going to find a place to smoke, so if you don't provide a place for them, they will go out and find a place to smoke. So, my thought process on it is by providing an area that is maybe a little more controlled and Sarah and Eddie can maybe control the, the volume a little bit better in the garden area versus out in the parking lot. And that's my thought process on that. Versus if you close it, then that encourages all of the smokers to go out in the parking lot, and then you have similar conditions to what's going on now.
Counsel DeForest.
Similar response.
If I can, if I can, Mr. President.
What does that do to our numerous other requests that we get for this smoking business for all the other establishments around? Are we going to have to do this for everybody?
Your staff? Ms. Christensen?
Every conditional use is case by case. We evaluate each condition, that's what a conditional use is. We look at each situation case by case and impose the conditions we feel are necessary to minimize any negative impacts.
So, you think, no, this wouldn't...
Please say it, President.
Will someone ask based on this? Oh, sure, somebody will always ask if you did it once. I mean, but you don't have, you don't have to feel obligated to give the next one that same concession.
Counsel DeForest, anything?
The conditional use was case by case.
Counsel Jones, did you have anything else to add?
I guess my concern, it's kind of like Counsel Vanda Bogart's, that no, in theory, it does not set a precedent, but do we want down the road to have a battle of people saying to us, well, you did it, and this is nothing against Sarah's Pub, so please don't take it that way. Well, you did it for Sarah's Pub, why not me? What's the difference? Are we setting ourselves up for a bigger fight by making this adjustment versus keeping it the way that it's been? I mean, I understand, I understand what we're trying to do, but I guess one of the problems, one of the kind I had and what I'm hearing from the neighbors is the noise issue. If I'm correct, that was one of the things that they were saying. Now, I'm not saying that everyone who goes out there to have a cigarette or something between these hours may not be loud, but are we adding to the noise? Or are we doing what the neighbors said? We're comfortable with what they're doing now, we like this, we want them to expand their business, we like what they're doing now. If we change it, are the neighbors going to have a problem with that? Because they like what they saw coming in here this evening. But I just want to make sure that we're not going down the road where it's going to create a hardship on this council or future councils in that debate. Well, you did it for Sarah's Pub, why not me? And I think that's going to put a much more hardship on staff to try to present that to a future business owner, or even people who we've already let this stuff go through, if they come back and say, well, wait a minute, we want to change ours as well. So, I, I want us to caution, I want us to walk the line very cautiously.
And it is slightly different, why, I will tell you why it's different from the others from having looked at all these, is that, number one, this area is screened, not just an open deck. And so it does allow a certain amount of control of the noise that the other ones don't. And it does keep the smokers, not that smokers are bad, but it does keep them on the Madison roadside of the building, where I think the natural tendency, if they walk out Sarah's Pub's door, is that they're going to be standing in a line which goes directly to the neighborhood. And so my guess is the noise is going to be louder with people outside that door than it will be in that area. And that isn't the case with all of these areas, because this is the only one we've approved that's fully screened. You know, it still is technically outdoors, but it's screened, and so it also provides some sound buffer that you don't get from the others that are truly open. So, it is different. It is a completely different kind of case than the others we've seen.
Okay. Counsel Haines.
Yes, I would like, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make the observation that we've had a kind of evolution of thought with this, that we're finding now that the smokers are outdoors, that they're much more of a problem outside the door of the, of the bar than they, than they were before. And so I can tell you, you know, having three bars within a block of me, that the noise outside of, outside has increased dramatically with this. And anything that keeps that under control and puts them as far away from the neighborhood as possible, I think is positive. And I, so I think, I think if we're going to do this, then it's, then it's important to keep, maintain that control.
Anyone else? I'm trying to be, I'm trying to do this. All right, there is a, there is a motion on the floor to change what was here this evening. So, I think we first need to vote on the amended motion. So, it's been motioned by John, just seconded by DeForest. All those in favor of the amendment to the original motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes five to one. Am I done?
Correct. Now, to vote on the...
Now, to vote on the original motion. It's been, that one was motioned by Vanda Bogart, seconded by Dench. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Did it work? Passes six to zero. Everyone's clear as mud about what we just did, correct? Okay. Okay. That concludes that one. Thank you for a very fruitful discussion, and thanks to all the citizens that came out and spoke. We greatly appreciate that. As Counsel John said, it's in, it's very important to make your, let your voice be heard because we need to know what you think. So, thank you for coming out, and we encourage you to continue to do that in the future. Thank you. Item five, citizens' participation. We did have one, Mr. Tim McKern, but I think he wanted to speak on this last one. Okay, that's, that's fine. Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. Oh.
You have one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Was I supposed to sign in?
No, go right here. I'm sorry.
Good evening. Amy Loudon Beck, 10737 South State Road, 140 in Clinton. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce myself as candidate for Wisconsin's 45th Assembly District, which includes the city of Beloit, of course, the village of Clinton, seven towns, and eastern Rock and Walworth counties, and three wards in the city of Janesville. I have a history of community involvement and as a resource for business, particularly in Beloit, where I've spent the last eight years at the Greater Beloit Chamber of Commerce. First, as the executive director of the Business Material Exchange of Wisconsin program, then as vice president and interim president. I'm also involved in various community organizations and presently serve as a supervisor on the Town of Clinton Board of Supervisors. I would invite you to visit my website at www.amyforassembly.com and strongly encourage all of you to please come out and vote in the primary on Tuesday, September 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time now, item six is a consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council members so request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point of, on the agenda. Is there a council that would like anything removed from the consent agenda? Counsel DeForest.
I'd like to request that item B be removed, please.
Okay, thank you. So, now, anyone else would like anything else removed? Seeing none, consent agenda at this time will consist of items 6A, 6C, and 6D. Is there a motion for approval of? Motion by John, seconded by Haines. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item 6B, Mr. Botts, please.
The item before you is a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Beloit Hockey Association for lease of the Edwards Ice Arena for the term of three years. Their current agreement expired in March, and we've been working with the association to develop this new agreement for the next three years. And we have increased the rates. They've consented to that, and it'll be for the reservation of 800 hours of ice time, in which they'll be responsible for paying for that. And there's also provisions for additional hours of ice that they would like to rent. There's another fee for that also in the agreement. And typically, we give the Hockey Association credit for setting up the rink, as well as taking down a rink in the spring and the, and the fall, then in the spring. That way, we don't have to commit staff to doing it, they're more accustomed to doing it, and so it works out really well for both of us to do that. With that, I'd ask the council to approve this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion from council?
I move that we approve item 6B.
Is there a second? Motion by Dench, seconded by Haines. Counsel, discussion.
Please, Mr. President.
Okay.
Mr. Botts, could you speak to the approximate actual operating cost per hour of the rink? I'm just trying to gauge for the public the comparison right now. It looks like we're charging an hourly rate of $78 per hour. What would you say, how close is that to our, our operating costs?
It's not quite what our operating costs are. I don't have that specific number with me this evening. I'm guessing that it's somewhere in the mid-90s is what it costs per hour to operate. But we've been working with the association over the last two contracts we have with them to increase the, the rates of hourly rate they pay for our ice.
Then I also would like to ask, do you have any sense of the numbers for our open skate attendance and other events and activities that the city uses the rink for? I just, I just want to have a sense of how much of this facility are we supporting solely the Beloit Youth Hockey Association activities versus how much amenity we're getting for the cost of this facility? Do you have any sense of the numbers of attendance for the city-related activities and events that are posted there?
No, I don't specifically have any numbers available this evening, but I do know that our numbers have been increasing over the last few years because of the promotions of the open skate opportunities we have. We've worked with the association to do those more on like Friday nights or nights that would be conducive for people to come out and use it. And that's worked out well for us. As far as, if the association wasn't there to rent the ice, odds are we wouldn't have an ice rink because they are paying for the majority of the use of that facility. So, you know, is it a benefit to the community to have it rented by, by them as well as offer an opportunity for our residents? I believe so.
So, is it safe to say that when we're scheduling? I saw that there was some contract language about how scheduling was to occur, so, and I heard you mention that we are getting some preferable slots. Do the city get first dibs on the slots that we would like to have available for ice time?
We, we work with them on the ice. It depends on what type of activities they have also going on. They may have games, they may have other things happening at different times, and we just try to work with them on doing that. But we have been moving towards more preferable slots.
Okay, good. And then also, just to clarify, the school district is using that facility as well for their, their team, is that correct?
The boys' hockey team uses that facility. The new formed co-op team, the girls use it, and they pay for their ice time.
Is that a school district-associated team, or?
Yes. It's a co-op team with both Janesville, Clinton, I'm not sure where all the girls come from, but I think Turner may, may even have some students involved with that, as well as White Memorial.
Okay, and just to clarify, the reason why they're paying for ice time versus the school district high school hockey team not paying for ice time, is that because of our mutual use agreement?
It's just because it came in after the fact, and we basically said that, you know, any new users of it, we've got to pay for their ice time.
Do you think there's any concern that we're making the girls pay for the ice time but not the boys?
The high school supports it.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Hearing none, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Item seven is ordinances, there are none. Item eight, appointments, there are none. Item nine, council activities and upcoming events. Counsel Jones.
I'll pass. Thank you.
Counsel Haines.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to remind everyone about Old Heritage Days this weekend. There's too many activities to list here, just get out and enjoy.
Thank you. Counsel Vanda Bogart.
That was going to be my comment as well. We simply came off the Labor Day weekend with a multitude of events to take part in, and I hope people did, and will continue to do so as we head into fall, Heritage Days being the next one this coming weekend.
Counsel Dench.
I would just like to remind citizens, this may have escaped their notice in some cases. Effective September 1st, new DNR regulations prohibit dumping of electronic devices in landfills or incinerators. Those items, such as television sets, computers, desktop printers, computer monitors, and even cell phones now must be recycled. If you go to the DNR website, you'll see our DPW is listed as a temporary recycling drop-off. I contacted Jan Pino from DPW to clarify that. She said that they will only be doing drop-offs on occasional basis, bases, and that on September 25th, from 8:00 AM till noon, Public Works Department will be accepting those items for recycling. And again, basically, any computer-type item, from the monitors to the units themselves, printers, cell phones, and so on, have to be taken to recycling centers. They cannot be just disposed of in, in the regular trash. So, September 25th, at DPW, 8:00 AM until noon, there will be a drop-off program. Also, there are other places nearby, particularly in Janesville. I'd suggest that citizens consult the DNR website for more information about that. I'd suggest that citizens consult the DNR website for more information about that.
Thank you. Counsel DeForest.
I have nothing, thank you.
Yeah, you got to stop doing that to me, Counsel DeForest. I have nothing this evening as well. Item 10, city manager's presentation.
There is none.
Item 11, reports from boards and city offices, there are none as well. And congratulations, Mr. Acting City Manager, for your first meeting, a job well done. Item 12 is a motion for adjournment.
I'll just take that.
Motion by DeForest, second by Johns. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.